I'll call the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the planning commission to order. First, we'll have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Townsend. Ms. Butler. Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Here.
Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the March twenty-first meeting minutes.
I have a couple of corrections. On page five, under unfinished business, the last paragraph just changed Mr. Rose to Ms. Rose. Is that okay with you? And then, um, this is a small one, on page ten, third from the bottom, I think it's, we do not accept armed burglary, instead of except, A-C-C-E-P-T. That's all I have, yeah, sorry.
Um, any others? I have one on page four, next to the last paragraph, it starts out, Mr. LaRochelle asked what the specific phasing for this, this, so take out one of, one of the thises. Any other comments or edits?
Madam Chair, if there's no other changes, I move to adopt the minutes of the last meeting, subject to the changes as announced here.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
All right, to fix the noted corrections of the minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Obstain.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Butler. Ms. Townsend. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye. Thank you, and you did a very, very good job on those extensive minutes. Thank you. Next, we'll have the citizens' comment period. We have two, two persons signed up to speak. The first one is Daniel Stewart.
All right, my name is Daniel Stewart, I live on eighty-one thirty-one, eighty-one thirty-nine Airport Road. I'm here to tell you guys, ask you guys to deny the approval of the three hundred plus homes or whatever down there on sixty that was brought to you guys a couple of weeks, or back in March. I feel, and I know a whole lot of other people feel, that we have enough housing developments being built in this county. We definitely don't need that, because I'm more wondering if we got the infrastructure to sustain what we all approved, or whoever's approved, that's being built, or in the process of being built. And then, I mean, we need to keep it as rural, I mean, I know it's not going to be rural, but we still need to have some ruralness to this county. It's one reason why I moved here, and I know a lot of other people moved here because of that. But I just feel we got way more than what we need for housing developments. So, and if you got any other ones that are, you guys are considering or whatever, keep that in mind as well. Is, you know, do we have the infrastructure, if not, you know, what's the future down the road to get that infrastructure of what is planned or being built? So, pretty much all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Next one signed up is Matthew Starr.
Hello, Commission members, my name is Matthew Starr. I live at seventy-eight oh one James Field Manor, and was coming tonight to just kind of put something on your radar. I've spoken with several of you recently, and I've got intentions to reach out and submit a packet to you via email that you can look over, but I'm coming to you today to talk to you about the proposed changes on the cluster ordinance and the zoning ordinance along with it. I think it's incredibly complicated, so I'm not going to stand here and tell you I have all the solutions. I have two major concerns, one or two avenues. One, I have several applications in the queue that we have spent a significant amount of money on, and to say that we've bet the farm is an understatement, and so I, we've been working on these for over a year. And it's my understanding from staff that they are probably meet all the requirements, and that they're working their way through the process. Staff has been incredibly helpful in comforting my anxiety. Nevertheless, it's concerning, because the timeline for which the ordinance could change could, could pose a problem for these. And so I'd ask you to consider that as you consider when to So, there goes. So just ask you to consider that, and then the second thing is, it seems to be a pretty radical change. And two things I'll note on the change, one, the density calculation is, will become significantly more restrictive. And in addition to that, one of the changes that was made in the past was that at eight lots, at the creation of the eighth lot, it kicks it into the threshold for a major subdivision, which requires a public water system or central water system. And that's, that's cost prohibited at eight lots, and so I would ask you to consider, if nothing else, to, to change that limit back to what it was, which was twenty lots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment period. Kelly, we have no presentations this evening, correct? And no unfinished business, so we can move directly into the public hearings. So I will turn it over to Dr. Schmidt.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have three public hearings before us. Each has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearings. Number one, each public hearing will be considered separately. Two, staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. Three, the sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors of the administration building. I ask the following. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission, and limit your comments to three minutes. When the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. The first public hearing is application ZM dash zero one dash two two, CUP dash zero three dash twenty-two.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to give a brief overview of the first public hearing before you this evening. Jackie and Mark Smith have requested the rezoning of approximately four point four five acres of land from R two to business, and also a conditional use permit to renovate the property into a cidery and event venue. The subject property is located at ninety-three oh two Eastview Lane in Providence Forge, and is the site of the former Providence Forge School. This area of the county is designated as village on the future land use map, and the property is surrounded by properties zoned business, R two, as well as Route sixty to the south. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the code, and are listed in your staff memo. The application was reviewed by all reviewing agencies, and their minor issues will be addressed during the site plan process. There are five proposed conditions in resolution PC dash zero six dash twenty-two for your consideration, and Jackie Smith is here tonight and would like to address the commission.
Thank you. Thank you in advance for your time tonight. I'm Jackie Smith, Jacqueline Smith, thirty-eight hundred Autumn Hills Lane in Quentin. And I purchased this property back in the summer of last year after selling New Kent Coatings, my business that I started in New Kent back in two thousand and ten. So I purchased the property, I thought it was quaint, kind of historical value, it was an old school that at its peak, I think, had thirty-six students before they built the new old school on two forty-nine. Judge Orange purchased the property probably for pennies on the dollar, and turned it into his residence, and then Judge Souter owned it until his death in two thousand and eleven. It was then put into rental and kind of fell into disrepair, so there's a lot of money to be spent, a lot of work to be done. But what, what we'd like to do is turn it into a small event venue and cidery in the county. The closest cideries to here are, you know, thirty, thirty miles plus in Richmond, Kilmarnick, none in this county. And I feel like when people come to a destination, to, to a winery, it's always nice when they have multiple places that they can attend, different venues, different types of attractions. That's what, I, I believe that's one of the things that's made the Scotts Edition in Richmond very successful, because you go there and you make a day out of it and visit restaurants, you know, cideries and breweries and whatever. So that's what I'd like to do with the property, and I, I really don't have anything else, if you have any questions. I think, did, how does this work? Did they all get a copy of the package? So you have the drawings and everything there?
When, when do you, will you be producing cider on the property?
So my plan is to plant an orchard, but it takes five years for the, for the trees to produce. So I, I would be buying juice if I decide to go that route. There is a possibility that I would white label and have it produced and sell it, and not, and not actually go into full production mode. So I have not quite decided that yet. Obviously, I have to get through this process before, I spend a lot of effort time, and, you know, I've done a lot of research. I went to the National Cider Convention for a week earlier in February, and I know what my options are, but I just haven't quite decided which way I want to go.
And if you do that, will it be in that building, or will you build?
I would build a, a barn, basically a barn, a production facility between the prop, the buildings that are existing.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Cider means apple cider?
It does. And not, not always apple, but peach, fruit ciders, fermented.
Sorry. Cider means apple cider, right? Get it on the record. You're pointing to one lot here, but it's actually, is it two separate lots? It's three, okay.
It's three.
Oh, and the little one there as well, okay. So I guess the, the question I have is with Shirley Commons and the homes that are going to be built back there, Eastview Lane, you know, traffic and stuff, what is, what is your, are you concerned for, if you're having an event, and this other development is built, there's, you know, residents and things back there, I mean, Eastview certainly can only handle so much traffic. So that, that's kind of a concern, how it might impact other neighbors there.
Well, the way the property is set up, it's the first one as you turn onto Eastview. I think the Shirley Commons entrance is more on the, on the opposite side, and it has a natural driveway that circle, that encircles the entire main building. There's a lot of room for parking lot, parking area to the left as you pull in, so there's, there's actually an entrance and exit that's already kind of naturally there. And like I said, it's the first one, so very, very little of Eastview Lane would be used for this traffic. And again, it's going to be a small venue.
As long as your customers use that entrance, right? They could use either one, really, but you'd want them to use the one closest to your property.
Yes, and, and there would be signage for that, directional signage for that.
And you had, I thought I read somewhere in the package that it was about a hundred capacity, you thought, or something?
That's pretty much what I'm thinking. And, and that wouldn't be daily, that would be only events, yeah.
Oh, okay. But you'll have it open to the public when the events aren't going on?
Your traditional hours, eleven to five, eleven to six, you know, in the, in the summer months, that kind of thing. Your traditional winery-type hours. And not every day of the week, I retired once.
And regarding it being a venue, and parking's not going to be much of an issue, except for the few times you have, you know, those large gatherings, do you anticipate street parking being an option, or?
No.
Okay, so I mean, and I don't know what, what is, do we know what the street width is there, or? I mean, even if it
What, what I've been told is that was a portion of the main road that went east to west in New Kent before sixty was cut in.
Yeah, because I, I guess I'm, I want, want to make sure that, you know, the few neighbors you have there, and that those are still residences? Those three?
Two of them are vacant, and two of them are, have existing, they have folks living there. That was one of the first things I did when I purchased, I had a thirty-day study period, and I reached out to all of the people that lived there by, by mail to see if there were any concerned, concerns, and my, the feedback that I got was, we'd like to see the, the place fixed up.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that'd be the one concern, if, if street parking developed there, and would impose on those neighbors you have.
There's, there's enough room for any parking that I need that's actually on the opposite side of any of the, of the neighboring homes.
And is it going to be an improved parking lot, or just parking on the grass, or?
It would, it will, it'll be a developed parking lot.
Right, okay. And light and noise during these venues, I know you're, you have conceptual, obviously, designs, I imagine, at this point, but I don't know, how close is the closest residence to where this will be occurring?
As of right now, the closest occupied residence is, you know, I three houses down, three lots down.
But the other, others could be occupied if rented, or technically, I guess.
Yeah, I think one of them is probably going to eventually be gone, it, it's uninhabitable. As far as, as far as noise, you know, that was one of the, one of the items that we have to address on the site plan, lighting, and as far as noise, we obviously have to keep it within certain hours.
Right.
Events within certain hours.
Right, because I imagine with, with the venue, I mean, there may be music or other things, which, which makes it a good venue, but.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. I see from the application that this is approximately four point five acres total of all three, three parcels. And from what I've read from the application, the, the following are identified as being uses on the property, which would be the parking and the drive aisles necessary for the venue. The, of course, the drain fields for septic service, which, which would be the primary reserve. I would presume you would have some kind of outside area for, for the venue for, whether gatherings may be outside?
Yes.
Okay, an orchard?
Yes.
Okay. Then the property also has a power line easement along the Route sixty of it? Okay? And now you've also mentioned that, should things go well, you're thinking about adding a building to, for the actual cider, cider production. I'm just wondering if this is enough, the four and a half acres is enough property to do all these uses on it? I love the idea, but I'm just wondering if it's maybe too little.
I have had Geo-Environmental come out, we've did, we've done the site survey, we've done the septic survey, and we have a reserved drain field. It's actually kind of laid out perfectly for all of these things that I'm talking about. So there were a bunch of very old dead trees in the front that are still not cleared. There's a possibility that when I plant this orchard, that, that they would be cleared. I mean, I've had to take down a couple of dead trees, but they would be cleared, and that's where the orchard would be planted, so it would go to Route sixty, which would also beautify the, the property. But there, there is plenty of room. I've, I've done that research, and I've had the, the environmental folks come out and take a look at it, and survey the whole thing, so I know where everything is going. There is an old barn on the property that's going to be demolished, because it is in disrepair, it's unusable. I think that square footage is, don't quote me on this, but I think the square footage of that is probably about twenty-five hundred square feet that's going to go away. So I, I don't really, that's, that's the, that's not a concern of mine as far as how much property I need. You look at the cideries in Richmond, for example, in the Scotts Edition, and they're operating a tasting room that's, you know, fifteen hundred square feet, you know, and, and they're viable business, and they actually go into, into mass production and stuff. So I, I'm not concerned about the amount of property I have there.
My second concern, I'll mimic Mr. Davis, is I'm a little worried about the accessibility from Route sixty. The roadway that squared off there that access Shirley Commons and your property is, I believe, a state highway, but is very, very underrated. I think I measured between seven and ten feet of actual pavement for that roadway. I would say, hate to see it encumbered by on-street parking by a venue that, or a function that may be put on at cidery that disrupts the ongoing of the adjacent residences.
What's the question, I'm sorry?
It's more of an observation, it just seems like the, the road or the access from Route sixty is underrated for the venue.
Have you been over there?
Absolutely.
Okay. So when you go in, the parking would be, as you enter Eastview Lane, and the, the road for the cidery, the road to this house goes around a full circle. So they would go off to the left to park, they're literally using that one portion of entrance from Route sixty, not the whole lane, and certainly not on-street parking. I, I would, I wouldn't want to do that under any circumstances. The first portion of the property that's closer to Route sixty, but has a lot of trees in front of it, would be the parking area. And then the next area up is the drain field, and then the, the driveway itself that encircles the, the place would be paved, and the parking lot would be paved. I, I, one of, one of the comments that was made is, obviously, I have to work with VDOT to make sure that it's viable, and that would be something that, that, that they've already suggested that I need to do.
You, you had said that they, they had done studies for the, the water in septic, and, and that includes studies for a production facility as well as in support of the, the venue?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I will open up the citizens' comment portion of this public hearing. Okay, no one has signed up, so I will turn this back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion on the, the conditions of the conditional use permit? Anything that, that we've, who's red flagged?
Maybe this is the question for attorney, if, do we, do we vote on whether it's to be, go, go from zoning from R two to business, and if it goes, if it's that way, is it a by right use at that time?
I can answer that, John.
Okay.
It still wouldn't be a by right use, because we don't have cidery as a use, so it'd have to go through conditional use, no matter what the zoning is. But we just thought it'd be more appropriate also to do business, because you can do event venue in business.
Ms. Ladue, the, the recommendation in the, the resolution for, with a positive recommendation is for approval of the rezoning to business and for the approval to operate a conditional use permit, as I understood it.
Any, any other discussion or additional comments on the, especially the conditions?
Well, just as an observation, and looking at similar uses for B, or business, brew pubs are permitted, microbreweries are permitted, an assembly hall, if you consider that close to being a venue, but wineries are conditional, so I don't know the disconnect there, but.
We just haven't updated our definitions.
Right. I know, I know that's Right, I know that's work coming along our way, so.
Yeah, we do need to include all, all the possible alcohol, alcoholic. Is, is technically a wine? Yeah, I can see. All right, well, he, hearing, hearing no other comments or, or concerns, can I have a motion?
I will make a motion, Madam Chair. In order to address protect and promote public convenience necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC zero six dash twenty-two to forward application ZM dash zero one dash twenty-two and application CUP dash zero three dash twenty-two to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation. And I guess that includes the five items listed that, by the planning department as well.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. They have a roll call, please?
Okay, to approve ZM dash zero one dash two two slash CUP dash zero three two two, how do you say you? For a favorable recommendation.
Ask us.
Okay, okay. Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Ayes.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Butler? Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend? Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. I'll now turn it back over to Dr. Schmidt for the next public hearing.
The second public hearing is application ZM dash zero two dash twenty-two, Shimano Development LLC.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'll give a same brief overview for this rezoning application, and then turn it over to Mr. Williams and his folks who are here tonight. The applicant was Mr. Taylor, but he was not able to make it tonight, so these are his associates. Representatives from Shimano Development have requested the rezoning of approximately eighteen acres of land from A one to R one. The subject properties are located just to the north of seventy-one sixty Olivet Church Road. The purpose of the request is to allow the properties to be subdivided into a small community of seven lots. Please refer to the proper statement that was submitted and at your place tonight. The future land use map designates this area of the county as rural lands, but it is also adjacent to the farms of New Kent PUD, and also land zoned for economic opportunity. Rural lands are intended to include low-density housing in cluster or open space developments or on large lots. The proposed lot size for this development is one acre, with one parcel to be designated as community common space. These parcels have access to the county's public water system, which the applicant intends to connect to. The application was reviewed by all of the reviewing agencies, and their comments can be found in your staff memo, and also further addressed during possible subdivision review. Like I said, Mr. Williams is here tonight and would like to make a brief presentation, and Resolution PC dash zero seven dash twenty-two is before you this evening for your consideration. Mr. Williams?
Good evening. My name is Jason Williams. My current address is nine zero three Neal Drive, Alexandria, Virginia. I am a, born and raised here in New Kent County. I kind of went through K to twelve, and have a long connection to New Kent County with several lineages of family as business owners, including myself, being a former business owner in the county, and very connected, along with my business partner and family member Rodney Taylor, who I believe has addressed you or, or reached out in submitting the, the application for rezoning. Tonight I have with me, and Shimano Creek Development had acquired the services of Mr. Edward Glass from HG Design Studio in Richmond, Virginia, and Mr. Glass, if you mind joining me, sir? So with our, our project development, we're, I'm really excited, along with my business partner Rodney Taylor, to, to embark on this journey, obviously with the approval of redevelopment. We're projecting a, a seven-home development in New Kent County off of Olivet Church Road. And as you can, sorry, as you can see here, in keeping with the, the look and feel and, and nature, appreciative of nature here in New Kent County, unlike some of the developments in the area, we wanted to make sure that we totally represent correctly New Kent County with this development in having larger lot sizes up to an acre. All of them are designed to be at least an acre, or maybe just shy of an acre. So very large home sites, and at the same time, these home sites, we were targeting to be the median, median price point within New Kent County, so not a very expansive cost point for residents. We want to make sure that people have access to high-quality living within New Kent, and this is our vision for, for that property along Olivet Church Road. So I want to leave it up to Mr. Glass to share any other details?
Yeah, I was just going to introduce myself. Eddie Glass, I'm a civil engineer with HG Design, and I'm here to really answer any questions that you have. I think staff has spelled out the project well, and this plan that we, we have, this preliminary plan represents what we intend to lay out.
Any questions, Commissioners? I will open up the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing.
Okay.
The first one is John Sweat. I was going to say Sweet, but.
You had fifty-fifty shot. So my name's John Sweat. I live at seventy-two thirty-nine Olivet Church Road, have for twenty years. So I've seen many changes in and around my home. Mister, if we could expand out, we see what once was a good forested, forested land and cut over, it's completely stripped down to farmland now. And we see the farms in New Kent Development has taken over a certain amount of area in the area as well. Much, what has not changed is Olivet Church Road has not increased in any of the services over the past twenty years. The road has not been, fundamentally has not changed any whatsoever. So that's some of the micro impacts of, of, you know, kind of my proposal to Mr. Taylor, Mr. Williams' development here, with all due respect to them. I don't think this is a positive use of the land or change in zoning for the residents that currently live in the area that would be impacted by this development. I don't think it's positive for the environment with the increase of residents, traffic, light, light pollution, noise pollution, stuff, so, stuff that would come along with a, a development such as this and that type of area in combination with all the other ongoings in the area, whether it's farming, or and, and the local impact of the farms in New Kent Development as well. So most everything in the area is agriculturally zoned and rural lands, and I think that fits that area very well. Many developments, subdivisions such like this in this county, we've seen many get proposed and many get built. And as long as they are well-planned, they bring a certain amount of benefit to the community and natural growth in our areas with proximity to Northern Virginia, tidewater area of Richmond. Certain amount of residential growth is going to be natural. But our, we're growing faster than, for residential than we are for our own commercial. And I don't think that's benefit for the citizens of the county. I think that we need to look at our planning and really focus on how we can control our growth and bring in more commercial business to offset our tax needs, to be able to bring in our infrastructure that's required to support an increase in population. And I think a development such as this in this particular area would be counterproductive to our current residents and to this community. So one of the macro impacts I was looking at was just with our proximity and growth around the Virginia area. I touched on it, with New Kent's growing very fast, and I think that's my timer. So I want to close, and just thank y'all for your time, and I think my proposal has been well representative.
Thank you, Mr. Sweat.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Joshua Bazell.
I appreciate your time. Joshua Bazell, living at twenty-seven ten Kings Cross Quay. I'd like to add my voice to Mr. Sweat as well, in the fact we need to consider the return on investment for the required expenditure. So there's been some previous developments that we have, have heard in the last month or so around Route sixty of the two oh five Bobbins Bridge area, which would provide a larger ROI for tax base and concentration of development, preserving the rural characteristic of New Kent County. To increase the infrastructure load on that road itself, I don't feel you get the same ROI as if you were to invest in Route sixty and allow the developments in Route sixty to progress. It just comes down to ensuring we have managed growth here in New Kent. And I grew up in Annalee, Virginia, right by Alexandria. It was very rural, growing up, twenty-five years ago, much to New Kent. If you go back up there now, it is not, and a lot of that comes down to not having appropriately managed growth in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for citizens' comment portion, so I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Commissioners, are there any issues, concerns, comments?
One question. I guess for Kelly, it said earlier that they were going to connect to the water sewer as well?
No, there's no sewer there. It's just water, so it would be septic.
So it's enough room in the one-acre lots for reserve as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you guys want to talk anymore about that? Did you do soil work, or? That would be required as part of their subdivision.
Madam Chair, Kelly, in my past, it seemed like there was usually a fall zone that would be reserved for cellular antennas. Is that, is that something that New Kent has? Is it fall zone or easement for erecting?
For towers.
Or, or demolition of the towers, and is that, do, is that reserved on, within this site, or should, should it be reserved in this site?
I know that the fall zone easement is required for any new cell tower applications that we get in. I believe this tower is older, and I guess I'm going to have to ask Mr. Glass if he knows if there's an easement around the tower.
There is an easement, but.
Wait, can you come up?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
There is a easement around the tower, but as far as a fall zone easement beyond what is represented on the plan, I'm not aware of anything.
Is this a monopole, or is it guided, the tower?
It's a monopole.
Another question. This subdivision seems to simulate very closely a clustered subdivision. However, I don't, other than through maybe an easement, I don't see really the open space other than on one lot. There may be the east, open space on the west. I don't really see the picking of open space on the north or east, and especially on the south where there's a roadway. So I'm wondering, how close to a really clustered subdivision are we looking at?
Well, we, I mean, we're showing open space through the, next to the tower, back towards the, the low, and then everything to the west is all open space. Everything that looks like it's landscaped on here to the west is, is part of our property, all the way to the creek, is open space.
Let me clarify a little bit. So if the rezoning would get approved, the subdivision would come in as a minor subdivision, not a cluster subdivision. They don't have enough acres. So the open space requirement, there isn't one.
It just seemed to be mimicking a cluster subdivision. And in the notations that were provided with the application, it, the notations kind of stronghold the idea that we're preserving all this open space
Right.
on the west, north, and east sides. I'm just wondering why, if it was done on three sides, why not the fourth?
Can you, it looks like there's six parcels, and the seventh is, but it says here that one parcel will be reserved for community common space. Oh, okay, okay, I got you. How, how big is the common space?
It's the remainder of the property. I mean, we have seven, roughly seven acre lots, and the remainder, eleven acres is open space. Ten or eleven acres will be open space.
And regarding those eleven remaining acres, I guess, and it's dedicated to be a community or open space or for some recreational use, is there any plans on what it will be, what it actually is going to be, other than not developed at this point?
Yeah, right, I think it's noted in there about gazebos, playgrounds, those type of recreational opportunities for the, the residents in the community.
And is that parcel, is that part of, is there an HOA there, or who owns that property? Who will own that property?
As far as the HOA, I don't believe we've gotten to that point in the, in the so-called design. I probably will have to table that. I'm not sure as far as like who will own the, the, the open space, so to say.
Right, and I guess too, is there anything in, in your mind at this point that's going to trigger that development, that parcel after so many other lots sell, or when would that be?
No, we're.
Any timelines?
So the, getting back to the vision of the property, along, especially with the addressing the, the concerns of some of the people who spoke just recently, like, I'm very much aware of, of making sure that this property is, is not the same as, as maybe others that have affected New Kent from a development standpoint. That's why, again, we could have taken the turn of, of maybe putting more home sites on this property, but that's not the design that I wanted as far as the vision of this property. Again, going from a midpoint-priced home offering on a full acres lot, with, with only, again, making sure that we are capped at seven acre, sorry, seven, seven home sites on the project. making sure that we are capped at seven acre, sorry, seven home sites on the project. We will not extend beyond that.
In the assumption of having more lots or more lots to build, it will be the assumption that you have that rezoning pass as well?
Correct, correct.
Because it's not...
Yeah, the plan is the seven lots that you see there to be used for the single-family home sites, and then anything in reserve will stay as so-called common area or open area.
And I guess one final thing with that common area. Out of the 11 acres, what percentage or how many acres are RPA?
90% of it. I mean, what you see in the light green where the tower site is, that area is not in RPA. The remainder of the property is RPA. So, we wouldn't be doing anything in there anyway.
So, I guess what is the usable space then?
It's probably 20,000 square feet. Yeah, if, it's probably 100 feet wide, 200 feet deep.
Madam Chair, the road design that you're going to put in, assuming that that cell tower will need maintenance and disassembly, so cranes and any other equipment needs to get in there for maintenance of that cell, of that tower, has been considered in how you're going to plan the road?
It'll be a public road. It'll be better than what's currently there as just a dirt access road.
Okay, but my question, so I extended my question a little bit. To set up a crane, to, you know, if they have to go up and disassemble this tower or something, you need more than just access. You need room around the tower, and that has been considered in your arrangement?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
When, we see this a lot. The developers come in and tell us how much tax revenue is going to be produced over a certain amount of, this one talks about 10 years. And then, in a few paragraphs down, it also mentions that there's 2.6 children in each of those homes possibly. The $219,000 over 10 years won't even come close to pay for those, that education for those children. So, this is more of a comment, not a question. I wish more people would not put this in the, try and to be a selling point for it.
That wasn't my intention at all to be a selling point. It was our, maybe a less of an effort to at least provide some type of assumption. Obviously, if it's not, you know, as 100% accurate in your view, we respect that and definitely note that.
Well, it's always, a single-family home costs more than what the taxes are, let's put it that way. So, it's an investment on the community to approve something like this.
Note that. Thank you.
I gather this is family-owned land?
It is.
It's been in the family for years and years and years.
That's correct, sir.
Because I noticed who the neighbors are.
Yes.
And it's all got pretty much the same name, or it's Farms of New Kent, or Mr. Poindexter.
Correct.
And one other person. So, this has been a thought of yours for a long time, or, and Rodney?
Yes, correct. Yeah, we are, because of the both of us and our ties to New Kent, although we are no longer residents of the community, it's a very deep run in our connection to New Kent. Obviously, we've seen from close up and a little bit of a distance, the growth of New Kent County. And we, as developers, wanted our vision to be a part of the vision of New Kent, the managed growth. So, I could echo maybe some of the persons who have spoken dissent of the project, but they are in tune with some of the thoughts that I've had about the growth, and that was not something that we wanted to apply to this project. We wanted to be very respectful of the county and the residents here, to be able to put forth a project, again, that really showed a feature of larger lots at a price point that was really, to be quite honest, undervalued to some extent. And that's what we were targeting, to be able to open up the wonders of New Kent for residents and literally provide them the full scope of New Kent County, the rural living, the access to land, to forestry, to woodlands, and really provide that in this vision that we had for the county and this particular development. Thank you.
So, I'm glad Mr. Moore brought that up, because I noticed there's Rod Taylor, there's Rodney Taylor, there's an address in Virginia, I think there's another address in California.
Yeah, correct.
Is Rod and Rodney the same person?
Father and son.
Father and son.
Correct.
So, that explains the two addresses.
Yes.
Kelly, just for your... Excluding this property and the potential of it being rezoned to R1, are there available other parcels, zone R1, that are yet, have yet to be developed in New Kent County?
That's, I'd have to look into that, Mark. I'm sure there are. The ones I'm aware of are closer to Quentin. I know there's a chunk of R1 properties close to where the school is being built. We get calls all the time asking where available residentially-zoned property is, and the truth is that there just aren't a lot of R1 parcels available, besides the area that I just talked about. I could look into it further if you want.
That's all right, sir. Thank you.
I did have one last comment about, as far as the zoning and kind of follow-up to maybe your question here. Within our vision and the reason that we looked at this particular parcel, because we do have ownership in other areas and locations throughout New Kent, but this one was quite unique in that, again, being the accessible point to the county water line, which actually runs next to the property. That was really favorable for us, and although the numbers weren't favorable to connect to the sewer line, it is something that was at least available to us. So, again, a location in the county that had access to water, public water in my terms, and public sewer was very unique for this location. With all due respect, from being a residential, just to the, I guess, based on this map here, the south of it was commercially designated, and then obviously the farmlands that you see across the street there to the right of the photograph there. So, we just felt that, from our perspective, that this was a very unique property. It had been cut, like, in essence, clear-cut for forest, for full woodland. And then we had planted it, roughly 1,000 pine trees to replant the property, and that has taken hold. So, again, our vision was to, again, keep the vision of the natural beauty of New Kent intact, restrict the over-usage of building on this particular 18 acres, and then, again, be in line with New Kent County from a public works perspective, being attached to the public border line that's currently running through the property. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will. I will speak that I'm a little reserved in making a motion on this proposal for two reasons. Number one, that we do have a comprehensive plan, and this is supposed to be an area in the future to be still rural lands. Number two is there was notation in the notes supplied with the application, and I'll kind of quote or paraphrase it. It says, "It is our hope that the values offered will encourage current New Kent residents to stay in New Kent County versus moving outside the county, thereby mitigating some of the additional burden on schools and other services." Well, as we know, affordable housing or workforce housing, or whatever housing in the price point that you're envisioning, that is a detriment on the financial resources of New Kent County. It does cost more in services than it does in the tax generator on those improvements. That's my comment. A lot of my comment has to do with, because of the background in New Kent that we see in the company that is doing this, I'm very, very positive about it. I just hope that the people that are looking to do this realize what the meeting tomorrow night is about, and that also they're on the road to the dump, okay? And, you know, that, those are, those situations that, you know, make sure you know, you know, what that's about. But, I will state in, I'll make a motion, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC-07-22 to forward application ZM-02-22 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation, with whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chairman. A motion to adopt for a favorable recommendation of ZM-02-22. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Butler? Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend? Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
I'm saying.
Ms. Rips?
No.
The motion passed.
All right. We will move on to our third public hearing, application 0A-01, or OA-01-22.
I know we've been working on this for a couple of months now, and I'd really like to thank everybody who's given their comments and thoughts and their help with the staff in coming up with the draft performance standards for solar projects. We did receive some public comment that I placed at your spots tonight from the Shaberton Group, who we'll be hearing from at next month's meeting. They did have some good suggestions that we could incorporate into an updated draft before we get to the board, but I'll just give a little brief overview. Tonight, the commission will consider and receive comments on ordinance amendment OA-01-22 to add definitions and performance standards for energy storage projects and solar generation facilities. These uses will still require a conditional use permit in the A1 and industrial zoning districts, which will give the commission and the board additional assurances to mitigate the project impacts on a case-by-case basis. The performance standards, as the draft form addressed requirements for public notice, development standards, setbacks, waivers, and modifications, coordination with local emergency services, and decommissioning requirements. Resolution PC-09-22 is before you for consideration.
We'll open it up for citizens' comment portion.
No one signed up?
Okay, then we will close this public hearing and turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Does anyone want to go first? As far as comments, suggestions?
I'll start, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So, I did have comments that I did forward to the planning department and to Rodney. I did add the, thought it was important to add the, regarding the screening, but new planning shall be native species to include pollinator-friendly native plants, and planning did include that, so I do appreciate that. I didn't see anything about sediment erosion control specifically in those standards. I'm assuming that's generically included in, you know, site plan or site plan reviews or other standards. So, it's not, I assume it's not necessary to include that because it's already covered. So, I guess, even after the site is developed, I guess, if there's an erosion issue, is that addressed, has that addressed the environmental division, I assume? And also, just as a comment, we don't address maximum size or minimum sizes either, so each CUP approval is conditioned, is subject to debate based on individual characteristics of the site. So, if we don't identify a mini or max acreage requirement. And I guess a question as well, should we define other solar farm designations at the same time as they apply to individual or home use, or solar farms producing less than 2 megawatts of electricity? I don't think that's, those definitions are included, or, and if not, is it necessary? Should we include some other definitions just for clarification purposes, even though this particular performance standard is not dealing with it? That's my comments.
As far as the definitions, maybe, maybe not so much definitions, but... But, some additional thresholds, yeah, for, to grade the size of the, of the facilities?
Right, whatever that measure may be, if it's, I guess, megawatt output of it or whatever's appropriate.
Yeah.
I think it'd make it easier or cleaner for planning when they get us a middle where it falls.
Absolutely. Yeah, because there, I think there's probably some bright lines that we may want to clarify a little bit, bit more as far as the level of effort that's... as far as the, the level of effort that's, that's going to be, that it's going to take to, to approve a project.
And I don't have any suggestions to what they may be. I'm not an expert in the field, so I know we have a couple here.
Madam Chair, with regards to Mr. Davis's suggestions, I think it would be beneficial to have a little more breakdown in capacity limitations on various, or defining capacity limitations on various, whether it's communities older, or minor, or residential's pretty well spelled out in state code, if I recall correctly. So that would help make our decisions a little bit easier. Furthermore, Kelly, if I may ask you about a couple items on the proposed ordinance. In Section 98-878, Section 2 Development Standards, Paragraph A, it goes to identifying radio interference or electromagnetic interference to adjacent residences. It gives a limitation of when that's to be resolved after it's been identified, but it doesn't really give a date or timeline of when the study is to be commenced. So after, I mean, the study's commenced, and then there's a period of time in which it has to be resolved after that study. But once it's identified, it doesn't give a period of time when the study should be commenced. I wonder if, there shouldn't be something like that in there.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it should be 60 days, or 30 days, or whatever, 45 days. But it could be floating, oh, we're waiting on our study, or waiting for the study commence. So I'd rather see it more confined into a period of time of action.
You mean for a study to be required within 60 days of the site going into service?
No, a study of when it's identified, there's a, there's an issue.
So upon receipt of a complaint?
Yeah, yeah. Or whatever level of complaints that are, there are. If it's one, I wouldn't think there would be motivation for it. But if there's several, 10, then I think something needs to happen within 60 days of that period, or 40 days, whatever that period of time is.
Or validation of the complaint.
Exactly.
And then you may want to include internet service, because we're talking about stringing internet throughout the whole county, even though it's on fiber, or supposed to be on fiber.
Okay. So you're saying, Mr. Bennett, to put something in about when the study should commence, like, within so many days of receiving a complaint?
Correct.
Dot, dot, dot.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, it's not with one complaint. I think it'd be more appropriate if it is, say, half dozen to a dozen complaints of adjacent residents having an issue. If it's one, it may be them, you know?
Yeah.
But if it's six of them, six adjacent residents, it may be more pronounced issue that needs more immediate action.
Okay.
I guess a question, who would respond to the complaint from the county? Is that a?
It'd be something that, go ahead. Well, I think that we would notify the project point person that's on the application for that particular project. And I don't know who exactly would do the study.
The way I, the way I read it is that it's on the onus of the, of the project.
They, they'd have to hire a consultant to, to perform the study.
Right. And I know that's something we talked about last month with the Borrego folks, and that that was their suggestion to get the third-party study done.
To be clear, it doesn't necessarily have to be adjacent. You know, it could be anyone that's on that same electric distribution circuit, you know, if there's a solar farm that's producing problems.
Agreed, it, it's just, I was just using it as a point of reference for discussion, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
I know what Mr. Bennett is saying, but on the other hand, if you're that one person, and they say, well, we're not doing anything because there's only been one person that's complained or has a problem, I don't think we should put, I don't think we should put a minimum number on there of to how many people it has to affect before we take action. I mean, I wouldn't want to be that one person. I mean.
No, no, I mean, you've got to.
Because I've been there and done that. I was that one person.
You've got a good point, and I think probably the extent of the problem, even if it's one person, there may be, there, there could be an evaluation done. Whereas that there would be a larger study done if there, if there were multiple complaints.
Well, I think it's a process.
I don't know how, I don't know how you put that into the, into the code, but.
I just don't want it to be a bribe.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Hefton.
I'll throw in my two cents. I don't know, I'll either make it muddy or help clarify. If you're looking at Section 2A, is that the language under 98-878? So the way the language reads is that if it is reasonably suspected that the energy storage project, basically, is materially disrupting other utility transmissions, then the owner of the energy storage project or solar facility shall conduct an EMI study, whatever that, that is. I, I don't know, probably Mr. LaRochelle knows and can explain it to us all. But the way I would understand that as a practical matter, how that would work and be enforced, is that you may get one complaint, you may get several. That would go to the zoning administrator, he would, she would evaluate that. The one complaint could be sufficient to establish, in his or her mind, a reasonable suspicion that there is a, that there is material disruption. It may be that that one complaint doesn't. That would be a decision that the zoning administrator would make. If he or she determined, based on the one or several complaints that it did material disrupt, then the county would notify the, the owner of the utility project and say, hey, look, you have to do an EMI study. We've determined that there's a reasonable suspicion that you're interfering. And then if they failed to do that, that would be a zoning issue. So I tend to agree that it's going to be very difficult to just put a arbitrary number in there. And I, I think I'm comfortable with the language reasonable suspicion as it's written right now, so.
Should we put reasonably suspected by county authorities? Because that seems kind of vague. Reasonably, the homeowner might reasonably suspect that the solar site is interfering with them, but should we, should that be specified?
Sure, it's, it's, the reasonable suspicion is a, is a, is a reasonable man sort of standard. So it's either reasonable, or it's not, and that would be what the county would determine. So you can add that, that's the way I interpret it. I don't think you need to, I think it's, to me, that's what it means. But essentially, I, that, I interpret it that way, Mr. LaRochelle, yeah. If you want to add it, you can, but I'm okay the way it is.
So that it's not lost? My idea is to put a time limit that that reasonable suspicion could languish. You know, instead of, oh, that's just one complaint, we'll wait until, we'll wait until it gets worse, you know?
I think that's, am I convinced, based on this one complaint, that there is one, or do I not know? I think he or she makes that decision. You can put that in there, but then you, if the zoning administrator doesn't have a, hasn't made up his mind by that arbitrary.
My opinion is it's almost instantaneous, once they reasonably believe that there was some interference, then.
I mean, it's their job is to investigate it and to.
Landfills. I don't material in our landfills, or, or be responsible for transferring it.
I think, wouldn't that be solely defined by how the waste is, is characterized? As to whether, you know, the, the waste regs would, would govern whether or not our transfer stations could, could even handle that, that type of waste? Well, yeah, but, I mean, if a pickup rolled up to one of our transfer stations with, with some solar panels in it, I'm not sure that, I, I'm not sure whether they'd be turned away or not.
It's my understanding, on occasion, they had turned away electronic devices, which solar panels are. And it's because they're, there's no buyer for them. So then they just languish there at the transfer station. So it would, it would seem to be appropriate for our jurisdiction that, that upon decommission, those items are taken away, and they are no longer a responsibility of New Kent County or the citizens thereof.
Could, could we have something to that effect as a stipulation in the decommissioning plan?
That's what I was asking. Most, most companies, when they come to us with these projects, they kind of have a plan in mind for what to do with the materials when it gets decommissioned. And that could certainly be part of the decommissioning plan. I know we, we talk about and hear about what happens to the infrastructure and everything that gets removed, but not specifically called out with the panels. So, I mean, that's something that we could look into a little bit more, but with technology, you know, maybe they will be able to be recycled, I don't know. I think we would count on the experts that are making the applications to kind of address that on a case-by-case basis. But we can put some, some sort of language and.
Could, could we add a phrase in, in the?
The equipment removal?
In the decommissioning plan that says that the plan must address the, the waste elements.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Of the facility?
Okay. Preferably outside the county.
I mean, we, we don't, we don't have a landfill in the county. No.
Yeah, that's true, we don't.
I mean, and it'd be better recycling of the panels. And I know that's what all the developers have said, although, you know. Yeah.
So add a sentence, in the decommissioning plan, something shall be specified regarding what happens to the panels.